We're going to start the meeting off with huge celebration.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to all of our guests tonight. We have a number of recognitions. We're going to start the meeting off here by beginning with, uh, Dr. Don Ruberg, who has been our attorney for 21 years.
Okay.
Come on up.
It's been 21 years because Steve Fennell has said that you were already the attorney before he was here and you've been here 21 years, so.
I've had the privilege of representing the Fort Thomas Board of Education for 43 years.
Oh, no.
This person has worked my father and then when he retired, I did it all myself. And it's been wonderful. You know, during the last 21 years, every time I'd appear at a board meeting, Brad would always ask me, "Are you billing us?"
You billing us first today?
Brad, I'm happy to report to you, I'm not billing this meeting tonight.
God, you've been working.
And the audience will be happy because since I'm not billing, I'll be very short.
That's awesome.
You know, I've thoroughly enjoyed the opportunity to work with this system. It's one of the outstanding systems, the outstanding system in the state, one of the outstanding systems in the country. You know, 43 years, we've dealt with some rather thorny issues at times, whether it be personnel, students, special education. With the help of a great administrative team and a very supportive board, we've worked our way through those. You know, it's nice to look at this administrative team because I've worked with a number of boards and I can compare them each to the other. And you've got a great board here, you've got a great administrative team, you've got a bunch of great teachers, very supportive parents. You know, I know I'm leaving everything in good hands. I'm going to miss this in certain ways. I'm still looking forward to retirement in other ways. It's been a great ride, that's all I can say. Mary and I do are looking forward to our retirement and in recognition that all the schools have done for the community and for Mary and I, we wanted to present a check. In closing, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. I've got goosebumps right now. Everything that's gone on here and the great results you achieved, just keep up the good work.
Don't go anywhere. You had your chance, it's now ours. We'll let the old guys start.
Well, I'll tell you, Don, you've been worth every single penny we've ever spent with you. His representation as our legal counsel has been second to none. The things he's gotten us out of and the sage wisdom that he's given, he gave us and has continued to give us for all of those years was just top notch. And you'll be sorely missed. It scares me. I'm sure we're going to have somebody that will be excellent representation, but you've been great. It's always been great and a great feeling of security to know you were there for us. And I've seen you in action. And I will say, it's very, very rare that we ever get a check from. Thanks again.
Well, thank you. On my seven, seven years of working with you, it's been an honor, all my time on the board. And enjoy retirement, it's really wonderful.
I'm looking forward to this.
I've been on this board now 15 years. 10 of those I served as board chair. And so whenever my cell phone would ring and I would see Don Ruberg pop up, panic struck my body. Because I figured, oh no, something's wrong. But I always knew, as Brad said, we were in good hands. And I've seen Don work amazing things for us and you have represented us well. It has been a pleasure to work with you. And I truly wish you and your wife wonderful retirement. You deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I totally agree. I think we never want to have issues where we had to call you or bring you in. But I know that, I knew that any time that you were involved in anything, that we were in great hands. And you did a great job for this district and really, you know, gave us great advice over the years. So we appreciate it and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so I can't say enough about Don and the help he's given. This is my third year as superintendent. In our first year especially, there was some transition stuff going on and it was so nice to have Don basically on speed dial. And he's always been so responsive, had such great advice and has helped us work through many different issues. I can't imagine anyone being a better resource than me for being a superintendent and for the board, helped us with so many things. And I'm not really sure what we're going to do without you. Right, Jamie? Like, we're going to call him. And I know, you know, one of the great things is that he always is very farsighted and he always looks at how can we do the situation with the least amount of disruption, the best for kids, the best for employees, and it always turns out the best. And so we are very thankful. Now, we have a couple of things for you. First of all, we have, if anybody wants to come in, maybe everybody comes down here and they're going to. All right, we have a Global Leader Award. First of all, you have to be a global leader because of, because of, you epitomize all of our characteristics of a fortunate graduate. Always collaborative and a leader and great communicator and definitely think critically and help us make good choices. And so we have to have for you.
I did it for 43 years, I'm upset.
Thank you very much. And, do you want to talk about this? And in addition, for, it says on the top, "In gratitude for your many years of invaluable service for Fort Thomas Matters Schools," got a watch.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Justin Brown.
All right, I'm going to take a picture with you.
Without Mary. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Don.
He's safe for my health.
I'm sure, I'm sure his wife will be very happy because lots of times we were calling him, right, Jamie, Bill, and he would be in, what, Ireland, Italy?
I've always said, when you get a call from the superintendent, they never call me, they have the high school diploma.
All right, we're going to continue to move along for recognition and our next guest is Bentley Hoffman. A recognition for the holiday card of this year. Bentley, would you like to tell us a little bit about the card that you made?
Do we have a picture to put up, Peggy?
Want to show everybody too?
So, I got this off my art teacher and I made a little bit of an advanced version of what she had taught us in class. And then I added a bunch of my own little details around it to make it a little bit better than just having a plain old house.
What kind of details you got on there?
Well, I added a reindeer, skateboard, a pond, I doubled the house up.
Very good. So when, when did you find out this was going to be the holiday card?
Like, two or three days ago.
Well, this is very, very cool. And in recognition of you being the winner of this year, we have a small token appreciation. And just remember that there's some money in there for you. Congratulations.
Bentley, you get some of those cards. Keep them, keep that for your portfolio.
Are you ready to go into sales yet?
Oh, yeah.
All right, next on the agenda tonight are the FCC LA National Competition Winners.
It's like, Mary, you can have a medal for it. Right, they're national winners.
Okay, so, hi, my name's Addie.
And I'm Megan.
And recently, we basically had the chance to go to the FCC LA National Fall Conference, which was held in Dallas, Texas. And we both competed in a challenge test. Mine was FCC LA Knowledge and mine is Education and Training. And we basically just took this quiz and they asked us questions about each of our topics. And each of our challenge tests relate to a career pathway. So Megan's.
Mine would be teaching and like being in a classroom.
Yeah, and mine would be following leadership. And at the end of the closing session, we were recognized as the top three winners. Megan came in first and I came in third in each of our categories. And, yeah.
Okay, oh, sorry.
Yeah, could you talk a little bit about what you want to do after school, you know, after you get out of high school and how this helps lead towards that?
I'm not completely sure what I want to do, but I want to work with people. And so a lot of the questions are like, how do certain people learn differently and work differently? So it'll help with whatever I choose to do in the future.
Yeah, and I also don't know what I want to do, but my challenge test, well, FCC LA basically focuses around being a leader. And this test that I took and being in FCC LA is going to help me to be a great leader in whatever career I take in.
Can you tell for the folks that are watching and in the audience, what FCC LA stands for?
Family, Career, Community Leaders of America.
Thank you.
Very good, very good.
And what grade are you guys in?
Uh, we're both freshmen.
You're both freshmen, congrats. That's awesome. So you plan to continue competing for FCC LA? Actually, continue, awesome, great.
Very good. We have.
Oh, yes.
We've got, we've got a couple of things for you for coming tonight. We've got some certificates and then also some Hyland T-shirts.
Championship.
Champions.
Championship T-shirts.
Congratulations. Can't escape, you got to do pictures.
Look for yourselves on Fort Thomas Matters.
All right, next on the list, if we could have Mr. Schneider come up.
He's here.
Uh, he's here.
He has to be here, it's paid.
So, uh, Mr. Schneider, you didn't see it, it was on Fort Thomas Matters and several other places over the last couple of years. But was named Assistant Principal of the Year this past, is that, I guess that's for the, is that for the big school?
Yes, collectively.
Collectively. You want to, you want to talk about the banquet?
Oh, well, it was nice. Was it Malone's in Lexington? So anytime you get to go to Malone's, you know, we line up and go as quickly as. I should have got the crab cake instead of the steak, so that was the mistake I made down there. It was, it was this nice, you know, I like to think I'm fairly humble, but it was nice to be recognized, you know, in the school, in the community, in the state as well. So, it was nice.
How long you been over Hyland?
It's my eighth year. I don't know when it's happening.
I'm in the running for the National Assistant Principal of the Year, which is with Washington DC.
The woman you're going to find out about.
I don't know when, but it sounds like it's over spring break. And so I've already got paid for a trip for my kids and so they would be a little upset. They want to go to Florida, so does Dad, so. We'll see what happens.
Well, I think everybody knows this, but you do, you do a great job in Hyland. You do, you have a lot of jobs there as well. And, and you also were a huge help a couple of years ago and served as interim principal there for us. So we do appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
I don't know that we have a T-shirt for you.
A T-shirt, or.
I've got a bunch, I've got a bunch of T-shirts.
It's a very fancy trophy.
I should have brought it, yeah. It's a major award. Yes, and my dad won it, I mean, 30 years ago probably was the principal of the year and I, that's how I introduced him in a lot of different places. And so he won it a long time ago. And, you know, sound wisdom from my parents, we're both middle school educators. And so just those little things that they told me when I first became a teacher, I think paid dividends up till today.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right, last but not least, we're going to do our monthly Portrait of a Graduate Global Leader Awards.
Right, and first of all, we have, these are both my parents and, um, Ms. Gallagher, Kate Gallagher, are you here? And you'll come on up. And she nominated Chris Caple, Jane Donovan, Kelsey Hofer and Gillian Hertz. So if you guys are all up here, you'll come up as well.
So December 12th, the more fourth grade students will perform in the Wax Museum. It's a time honored tradition, it's gone on. I don't know how long in Fort Thomas, but I can tell you all my kids have looked forward to it and we always look forward to going. This year, a week before school started, the state changed the statewide curriculum for fourth grade. So these teachers and Kelsey Hofer, who's not here this evening, just undaunted, kept going and wholly revamped the Wax Museum project to focus on colonial individuals as opposed to Kentucky historians and famous people. In three short months, while still acclimating themselves to the other changes in the curriculum, they produced a diverse list of men, women, people of all races, ages, for the fourth graders to present. Their efforts exemplify the competencies the Fort Thomas schools promote in their Portrait of a Graduate, so I nominated them to be a global leader. There are five competencies that are highlighted in the Portrait of a Graduate. I'm sure you all are familiar with them. But they are courageous leadership, empathetic collaboration, global communication, curious and critical thinking, and creative problem solving. They indisputably demonstrate all of these. They have persevered in spite of significant changes to the curriculum. They have quickly implemented these changes to maintain the Wax Museum and do it in December, not long after school started. They produced a high quality, diverse list of characters. They collaborated with their fellow colleagues in their school in order to do this. They're also a new team. Two of the teachers are new to teaching fourth grade this year and one of them has returned after a year-long recuperation from a life-threatening illness. They communicated the changes to parents, to students, they answered untold numbers of questions. And they encouraged the students to use any and all mediums to produce their projects. Their adaptations have preserved character of the Wax Museum despite the limited resources available for colonial research for fourth graders. And finally, while it's not a competency that's highlighted for Portrait of a Graduate, they're just so much more than teachers. They are mentors, they're disciplinarians, they're supporters. They are mentors, they're disciplinarians, they're supporters, they're encouragers, they're teasers, they're includeers, they're champions, and they're so much more. So, while these global leaders might not have a check to present to, to unite, they definitely are going to pay dividends for all of us in the future. So, thank you for.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's a great plug as well because you've got Wax Museum this Thursday.
Thank you all so much. We appreciate you going and helping on. Also, we thank you for nominating us.
Very sweet.
Um, next we have Karen Lynn Phillips. And, um, Phillips, uh, nominated Katie Mills and Stephanie Perkins. Even from us and Jonathan. Mrs. Mills is kindergarten, Miss Perkins is second grade.
Okay, so, yeah, these are both of my girls, amazing teachers. Um, this is Elena, Elena's in kindergarten, and Anna Grace is in second grade with Mrs. Perkins. Um, both of these wonderful women are graduates of Fort Thomas School, so they're testament to the great education that students get here. Um, Anna Grace had Mrs. Perkins last year for first grade also, and she prayed to Jesus every night that she would have her for second grade. Mrs. Perkins is just the kind of teacher that as a parent that you pray your child will always get to experience one day. Um, she is, she's kind, she's compassionate, she's encouraging. According to Anna Grace, she's hilarious. She has just always been encouraging to Anna Grace with a growth mindset. And just one example that I shot at, I could have shot out tons of them. I remember one day, we were talking to Mrs. Perkins and Anna Grace said, um, "I'm not a good reader." And Mrs. Perkins said, "Are you allowed to say that? You're not allowed to say that. You're making progress and you're learning every day." And then she shared with Anna Grace, she said, "When I was in first and second grade, I was not a fluent reader either. And it took me a while to learn to enjoy reading." And I just saw this weight lift from Anna Grace and a smile come across her face to know that she's going to get there someday. Um, you know, Mrs. Perkins has also always been very sensitive to any uniqueness of Anna Grace. Anna Grace is adopted from China. Um, Anna Grace is Chinese, different ethnicity from a lot of the kids at the school. And Anna Grace was born with a limb difference. And Mrs. Perkins has always just totally embraced that and encouraged that. She's let Anna Grace share about special experiences she's had. We come into school and talk about Chinese New Year. So, she has always just helped to make Anna Grace proud of the things that make her different. Um, and I said, "Because of Mrs. Perkins, my daughter goes to school every day and knows that she's loved, that she's respected, that she's safe, and that she's an important person. And in my opinion, that's teaching her more than anything else I want her to know." So, we just appreciate her compassion, her empathy, and her leadership of our children. So, thank you. Okay. And then second, we have Mrs. Mills here. Um, my sweet Elena has some challenges. Um, life's dealt her some tough cards. So, Elena has severe apraxia of speech. And, um, she has a genetic condition which makes her have some other challenges. And Mrs. Mills has just gone above and beyond this year to educate her in the regular classroom and to keep her with her peers. Um, Elena can't tell me really anything that she does during the day at school. Um, and so, Mrs. Mills said, "Well, let's implement a daily communication sheet. Let me send him a paper every day telling you what we did in the classroom, telling you what you can, what conversation starters you can have with her to prompt her to tell you things, what things she can work on." And as a parent of a child who is non-verbal, that's just, it's so important to me. And she doesn't have to do that. She doesn't have to take time each day. See Mrs. Grimmy back there also, and Mrs. Grimmy is part of this team. They don't have to take the time to do this, but they do because they know it helps Elena. And Mrs. Mills has never been anything but positive about having Elena in her classroom. She needs more help than the rest of the kids, but she never complains about it. Whenever she tells me anything that she needs to work on, it's always framed positively. It's framed first with what she's doing well and this is what we need to work on. Um, you know, in the past, I've had doctors that have made, um, not so positive comments about her future, about things that she's going to be able to accomplish. And the things that she's doing this year with Mrs. Mills and Mrs. Grimmy would astound these doctors. It would blow them out of the water with what she's able to do. Um, and she's doing so well because she has a compassionate, empathetic, positive teacher who is lovingly and patiently, yet determinedly pushing Elena to show us what she's capable of. So, I just appreciate everything that you are doing for her.
Thanks so much for sharing that.
We're going to stick with the Johnson theme there. And we have the Johnson Fourth Grade Learning with Nature Project for our student showcase tonight.
We have, we have a lot of them.
Yeah. To the front this way.
We're going to face these guys probably, yeah. Follow Ms. Booth, guys. All right, so I'll try to, I'll get out of the way and let them kind of get started. But what they, what they're working on, um, we are building a new school at Johnson, if you didn't hear. We, uh, it is going up. And these guys are, had a great vision along with a lot of different teams of people to help them. Um, and it's really a, a project that's, you know, taken on, like I said, a lot of different people from not only Johnson, but from the middle school, high school, um, different teachers. Um, so, what they're, they're titled, their project was called Learning with Nature. And they have a proposal of an outdoor habitat for the new Johnson Elementary that's going to kind of spur wildlife back into kind of our natural setting at Johnson. Um, so, I'm going to turn it over to them. These are all fourth grade students from Johnson. How old are you now, Alex? Oh, great, how old are you? High school, okay. So, I'll let these guys kind of take over from there.
Okay, um, first of all, I want to thank you guys for allowing us to come here and present our project. They've spent over a month working on this project and it has been an amazing learning experience. So, thank you. Also, I want to thank Mr. Nutner and Mr. Johnson. Without them and their vision and their expertise and knowledge, this project wouldn't have come together the way it has. So, thank you so much about, for that. Um, just a tid background of this project. Um, we, two years ago, before the school, um, Johnson was torn down, we would hike behind the school and we realized some of the construction was, um, the pre-construction was kind of tearing up the habitat and the students started to get wondering, um, curious about that. So, we, Ms. Nutner and I drove in, um, last year, students persuaded the community to build backyard habitats to kind of sustain the animals. And then now, we're planning what the new Johnson School Habitat would look, will look like, hopefully. Um, so, the driving question for our project was, as invested in students, how can we persuade our leaders at Johnson to create a visually appealing school habitat that capitalizes on native plants to encourage, encourage healthy wildlife? We also partnered with Mr. Roselle's class, which are these two students here, representatives from there, um, with his, um, manufacturing class. Engineering and manufacturing class to build, um, some parts that we'd like to add to our, um, habitat. So, I'll just put that up here, um, for you guys to see. They're going to talk about it in a second too. Um, and then also the landscape design class. They actually created the plan, um, and made the vision of our students come to life. Um, so, one last thing really quick before they get started. We were able to encompass many of the Portrait of a Graduate, um, standards in this project. I mean, every single one. I mean, they're being courageous leaders right now by representing the entire fourth grade. Um, they also took fifteen presentations and turned it into one, which is also amazing leadership. They collaborated, they worked in groups of four to five for the whole project. Um, they collaborated electronically and they set goals for themselves almost every day. They reflected on those goals and they planned what they were going to do the next day, which I think is a really advanced skill for first graders to be able to do. Um, global communicators, they had to, to make two, at least two presentations for this project. One of them was for a mentor day where we had mentors, a lot of the people in this room were mentors for that. They came in and, this was at the beginning of the project, and they bounced their ideas off some of the professionals um, and got some ideas. And of course, critical thinking and problem solving is just weaved throughout. So, um, without further ado, they were, they were going to introduce themselves throughout the project. So, I'm going to let them take it.
We are fourth grade students at Johnson Elementary and we are creating a native habitat. Now, when, since I was a second, no train was torn down in the way that I'm going to school. When our school got torn down, it was by a school outside of our school. Why we are making the habitat? We want to make this habitat because it will benefit the animals. We can learn from them and we can be part of our culture. Our school has got storage and the animals have no place to live for a time to be moved out. Here is a benefit. The new habitat would help kids learn about pollination and animal adaptation. That also means that Mr. Jeff and Mr. Paul would not have to miss a long enough. Having owl groundlings is very beneficial. They eat creatures like mice and bugs, we don't get scared by them. The seed of dust, you're supposed to eat. Small birds, mace, rattles, groundworms, crows, lizards, bugs. Southern colors, brown, black, white, and gray. Black, it's going to rain. Edge, two to three, sometimes one to five, rarely. Then after three, something. Brownbacks play with elephants, have to be fifty bucks a week. Ready for your own health, make your dress, make your outfit. Uh, brownbacks will benefit by eating the spears and stings. They eat five hundred to six hundred spears a day. Butterflies are good for our school and community. They are like bees, they pollinate. Also, butterflies live on and all, but what die. Pollination is good because when they pollinate, they make flowers. Bees, bees help kids learn about pollination and that helps for science class. Teachers can use this bee garden to teach about. The bee garden will make it so Mr. Jeff and Mr. Paul will not have to know the ground. Another benefit is bees will pollinate flowers to give us more food. There's a topic, the palm gets on the floor of the plant. The bees fly to another flower and the palm gets on that flower, they're flying the palm. First of all, it's fine, thousand trees. Those extra stuff they're on, it would help their fight, you can see them, and maybe not for all. They also do probably, the bees will be less than a half. They can help these kids about wanting to buy a garden. Um, this plan of the location was made by Mr. Roselle's class in high school. Uh, it, where the oak leaf high drain field is, it will be like, where it says flowering, uh, yeah, flowering. But it's hard, it's hard to see that. And then the spice bushes, well, we work some bushes, um, on the far top left. We will have trees in the top of that, like two of opal and green ash. We will have a pollination garden on the left. And, um, on the bottom, we will have trees such as the tree and two of oak. Papers are bricks or stones that are underground. And people can play with it. You can write four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. The hours total budget was four hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty-five cents for an empty basket, trees and chickens. Certified by the first day in June, April, May, forty-seven, and I think I said on, uh, different kind of. Uh, the tax budget, uh, we will be, uh, using it on bat houses, bushes and trees. The whole budget will be three hundred and forty-five dollars. Imagine in general, if you're here for eighteen dollars, it can make sense. Um, I don't know, you can tell it's over there, it's bad, you know, it's very, uh, spicy. Uh, also on flowers and vegetables. First level. There is even about three thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars on those bags. By such as staple, center, country, super. The final cost will be around four thousand two hundred dollars. What things we exactly need? For the many habitat, for many habitats, you would need everything on the budget to get the things that species need to survive and live their lives as best as possible. This, this process, and it took a while. Thank you for your time and please consider helping us make this plan as possible. This is my, Maya, Mary, Elena, Braylon, Isaac, and Polly. Marlo, Caroline, Lilo, Laura, Catherine, Doug, Kate, and Megan. Thank you, thanks to Mr. Roselle's class, um, for helping out.
So, it took a while. So, can you guys explain the different steps? I know, um, several of us have to get beat after you're all the projects. And you all really started with like seven different projects, right? And then you can kind of mine all that together. So, what were your projects overall?
Uh, so, first we started out with like, uh, each class would have one group of like cats. Birds, bees, uh, butterflies.
A house.
A house. Um, and then we shared them to some people in the teacher.
Community.
Uh, and then, and then we made another presentation for that in the same group. And we used like the presentation that we used for the last one. And then, uh, Mrs. Booth, she picked out some of the, uh, students to help make this data project happen, which is.
So, did you all go, you did like, through the presentation, there's a lot of work.
Yeah.
A lot of research.
Yeah.
They spent about at least a week and a half just on research because it was difficult to find native species to plant.
And so, that we didn't, we wouldn't ensure that we wouldn't be creating invasive or, uh, making invasive species or even more. So, that was, that was the trick. And I think that, what was, the hardest part was probably.
Budget.
Budget, finding out how much each item would cost.
That sounds like a lot of money to you guys, huh?
Now, I saw on Twitter, I think, Mr. Johnson, I know Ms. Nutner also worked on this. And Mr. Johnson, I saw you with the, working with them and the students at the high school, right?
Yeah, one thing we wanted to do was, you know, take advantage of the opportunity for, uh, Johnson and the high school and those are all on campus right now, to take advantage of the opportunity of our proximity to do some graduation together. And, uh, so I talked to Mr. Roselle and he agrees to, to let us use some of his students to do some of the design work with us.
And they created, I mean, they, they do amazing work.
I was going to say, can you guys talk a little bit about what you created too and working with these guys?
Oh, yeah, sure. Uh, yeah, there's not a whole lot today, so.
You can head up here.
Yeah. So, yeah, we call it like a bee hotel. And it's for like carpenter bees, wood bees sort of thing. And then we drilled the holes into the, into the dowel rods and into like the wood so that the bees could get into it and like, you know, dig their own, their own holes a little bit easier instead of just burrowing into the straight wood. And then we made these, it'd be smart, you know, so they don't go into the new school building, they'll have a place to go.
Gotcha. Now, did you guys get to go up to the high school and work with them any? Yeah? That's awesome.
And they also came to us three different times.
Okay.
So, the heat, this was the winning, um, prototype, but, um, there were. So the heat, this was the winning prototype, but there were, it has been fourteen other prototypes that were built. But this, have cardboard, but this was the only one that actually came to creation.
Wonderful.
Yes, several different students working with them. But Alex McCourt, he was the one who designed a particular prototype. The first prototype was actually out cardboard, but then we built upon that prototype. And then Adrian Holfeld, he was one of four students that was, that worked with the landscaping plan that you saw in the presentation. But Adrian was the only one who could do that tonight. So congratulations to the first MS.
Any other questions?
I just said, it was an excellent prospectus, better than I see in the business world. Down to the numbers and I really liked the fundraising part. You got some great ideas about going out and getting some grants and grants or something that are out there that a lot of people just don't go and seek out. So congratulations on doing that.
Can I also make a suggestion on fundraising? So I've seen, I've been to some weddings lately, okay? And weddings these days, they do a gift registry, right? And they ask for different things. I think what you guys laid out with all of your individual things, like a bird bath or like one of these boxes. That would be a great gift registry that people in this community would say, oh, I would love to give a bird bath to the fourth graders at Johnson. I will give, what was it, eighty-five dollars? I can't remember how much, whatever. But like, I could log on, I could give you guys a bird bath. I think you would find in this community, especially around the holidays, that there would be a lot of people that would love to help you guys. Because you guys, as Mr. Fennell has said, made a wonderful presentation. And I think you would see that this community would step up really quickly and help fund all of the things that you guys want. So just a suggestion, and I'm happy to help. I'm happy to be the first donor to buy one item, so, okay? Yeah, that's fine. Come to me, I have a credit card.
Well, you guys, you guys did a great job tonight.
Were you nervous? Did you know you were on me?
So, so actually, you guys can watch it on your YouTube channel. Because the board offices, the board meetings are filmed and we play them on YouTube. So you guys can watch yourselves.
Go back and watch it. But also, thanks for coming. Thanks for being very brave and coming up here and for coming tonight. We have T-shirts for each one of you to take home. And, well, thank you, thank you. And they're going to want to take your picture.
Yes. Probably all going to have to go in the hallway.
Probably outside, right?
So congratulations.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
Oh, another one not working. Red, the red is when it's muted, the red and the green, but I think that button is.
My mic, okay.
There you go, wow.
Okay, so I don't know if anybody wanted to speak in the community forum tonight. I didn't see anybody sign up, so.
He's, he's a little warm over here.
He was toasty. All right, so nothing for the community forum, then we'll roll right into the agenda and the action items with Johnson Elementary.
All right, project update. If you've gone by the project site, you're really starting to see things, not just above ground. But we're getting to the point where people can really see and kind of figure out what work is being done. There's a lot of interior and exterior CMU walls, masonry block walls, being constructed at this time. And the associated work along that with electricians and the plumbers, kind of running their conduit and their plumbing lines through the walls. You know, getting them in their proper locations. The concrete slabs for the gymnasium and the cafeteria had been poured. There was a large concrete pour last week that was for some exterior walls of the gymnasium. Kind of trying to finish off those foundations. They've been making a lot of really good progress. You know, they feel good about where they're at. They're trying to take advantage as much as possible with the good weather, knowing that, you know, we might get some rain, snow, cold, things like that. Particularly trying to get as much masonry work done as they can before it would have additional cost impacts to the project. So they seem pleased we have another progress meeting tomorrow where we'll get some additional updates and see where things are. So things are going quite well at this time.
No questions?
So in terms of actual action items, we have just one, a pay application to Morel Construction. It's number nine for the amount of five hundred fifty-four thousand, eight hundred forty-three dollars and seventy cents.
I'm guessing Joe took a look at that as well and threw it on?
He texted me this afternoon and said he couldn't be here, sick daughter.
All right, I need a motion for approval for this payout number nine.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
We've missed that question the last few months.
I'll bet you have. Bet you have missed that. I had a couple others, but I'll keep you in check.
So that is all for Johnson tonight. Next, we have, last action item is revision of policy on staff meetings.
Yes, and this has been past practice for quite some time. We decided that we would update our policies with the feedback from Mr. Portaco. As we're recognizing that they would like to request faculty meetings prior to the beginning of the instructional day. So I am presenting you a draft that does just strike out saying that it would be after or the conclusion of the regular school day as a first reading.
And just so you know, that's been at least, what Jeff, you said at least eight years since you got here. It's, they've always had faculty meetings at the beginning of the day, so.
So we're making it legal.
So we're just making it a policy to do what we're doing. To be compliant. So moved.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Jamie. All right, that is all for action items. So we're going to go to discussion items now, Bill?
Am I first?
Yeah.
So I have an update on our conference improvement planning process for the year thus far. We currently have gone through a couple of tasks as is outlined in sort of statute for the things that schools and the district has to consider through the conference improvement process. So we're right now in the phase where each of the schools is constructing and as are we, our conference of school improvement plans and conference of district improvement plan. But there are a couple of things that precede that. And so the very first one is called the continuous improvement diagnostic. It basically outlines the phases that comprise this continuous improvement process. There are phases. It started back in October, it transitioned to the month of October and November, and then the one that we're in right now, phase three. All, all that we all, all that we had to do, both at the school level and the district level, was to go into E-prove, which is the platform that houses each of these technical elements. And sign off that, yes, we will follow this plan. So each of the principals, all they had to do is go in and literally type in their name. And then I did that on behalf of the school district as well. So that one was easy, that one didn't require a lot of thinking or content, and that's just sort of an update saying that we will follow through with that plan. What followed that is a needs assessment. And so the needs assessment is essentially a tool by which the schools or, and then the district are able to take a look at our data and make determinations as to what should be our improvement priorities moving forward. And so I did, I pulled out some examples of each of the things. We're not going to talk about each school's plan, but of course, you certainly have access to that information if you'd like to have it. But the high school is an example. So when they took, when they reflected upon their current state, the school and their SPM council indicated that, okay, they had a reduction, a decrease in ACT from the March administration from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. That was sort of a, a non-favorable component. But a favorable component of their current state was that their attendance rate continues to be very high. And so each of the schools had to kind of go through their data and pull out strengths and weaknesses in that, and from that perspective. They identified priorities, two priorities that the high school identified within their needs assessment were their transition rate being at a, currently at an eighty-six point eight. Wanting to have that increase closer to that hundred mark. And then also that there, and we all know this, the significant achievement gap that persisted between students with disabilities and students without disabilities. So a primary example, or at the elementary school level, if you kind of consider what Moyer came up with in their needs assessment. Then they identified trends as their disability groups and their students that are from economically diverse groups saw lower scores as compared to their, to their counterpart groups. So when you think about each of the subgroup domains that we get data analysis for, those, those particular student subgroups performed lower than some of their same age peers. They identified a few strengths. Their strengths were that their profession, their proficient distinguished rates continued to be quite high as compared to the region and state. And then also, they actually had one particular subgroup, which was labeled as the two or more races, performed consistently higher in weights of proficiency than do all students at the school. So they sort of, their subgroup outperformed their all-student group, which is kind of an irregular facet in our school district. So that's kind of how the needs assessments are relayed, really considering each one of those components and then completing those as a reflective piece to kind of carry forward your work. So then the next piece that's a part of the process before ACIP or CSIP is established is, we have to complete assurances. Essentially, right, there are laws and there are expectations that we are following certain criteria. And so we, as schools and as a district, have to assure that, yes, we are certainly in compliance with these things. And the assurances cover considerations such as Title One, be it school-wide or targeted assistance. Or Title Two, which those are the monies that we get to make sure we have highly capable and qualified teachers and administrators. It's ensuring that we have an IOP in place, the Individualized Learning Plan. And then, you know, what does your all-program component look like? So here are some examples. So Woodville, within their assurances document, for target, for Title One targeted assistance, they had to assure that, yes, students are identified for services according to what the Every Student Succeeds Act indicates is appropriate and permissible. They also had to indicate that the students who are receiving Title One services are going to be meeting significantly challenging academic standards. Both of which the school is able to assure that, yes, that is certainly in place. They also took a look at their all-programming and where they were able to indicate that for Title Two, monies are allocated for teachers for professional development. And that also, students in general, school-wide, have access to highly effective and experienced teachers. So that's just sort of an example of how it looked like at, at Woodville. From the same lens, we can look at Johnson Elementary School when they did their assurances. Johnson had to indicate, and I'm just pulling out different examples, so Woodville did do this too. But our schools had to complete a Kentucky teacher performance survey, basically indicating the rate of teachers who performed at the exemplary or distinguished levels or ineffective levels or developing levels based upon the previous year's evaluation cycle. And so Johnson was able to assure that, yes, we certainly did report that data to the state, because that is publicly reportable data. They indicated that they do not have a Title One school-wide or targeted assistance program. They do collect and then publicly disseminate data through their school report cards, of which, of course, everybody can see, because that's publicly, you can see that online. And then they distribute to parents and family members, a parent and family engagement survey through having a policy that's approved by their site-based council. So those are the types of things that we're saying we had to assure components, those are examples of what those assurances look like. And then the last piece in this phase is the safety report. And so there's two considerations for the safety report. There's a school-level safety report, and then there's a district-level safety report. So for example, at Highlands Middle School, they had to indicate that, yes, they have an emergency management plan in place and that it received council approval and then when, so it had to be documented as to when it was approved by council, that they had evacuate, these are examples. They had evacuation routes posted throughout the school building in each common area. They are assuring and they're indicating that they have drills and practices that have been developed and that are being implemented for each of the different emergency scenarios that could be in place. And that they have practices in place to control access to the building, which of course, we've spoken a lot about as it relates to Senate Bill One. At the district level, we have to indicate through our safety report that, yes, we have a policy that has been adopted and implemented to indicate that all of our schools will have an emergency plan. And also that we provide local first responders with each of our schools' emergency management plans for quick reference. So, you know, those four components, that the diagnostic and then the needs assessment, the assurances and the school safety report, those are all the initial tasks that precede things that are happening in this phase, which we'll share about in January. The most marquee or notable one is the conference of school improvement plan and the conference of district improvement plan. Just a little update, it's not postponed, but just wanted you to know. Any questions or anything you'd like to know about that? Okay, we can certainly deliver those documents if you'd like to have them. So, is this next?
Yeah. So just to give a little background to make sure everybody knows kind of where we are. Last year, and actually the year before, we had several opportunities for different, we were at different venues where people had asked that we look at diversity, inclusion, equity more. So you may remember from the community conversations in the fall of, or spring of two thousand eighteen, when we were developing our Fort Worth graduate. We had many community members that say, hey, we need to be more welcoming. Might we do more to really address our issues of how are we working with students from diverse backgrounds and that sort of thing? We tend to be not as diverse a community at every school, so we wanted to do more to not just become more diverse, but also to ensure that we are honoring the diversity of our students and that everyone feels included. So that, that was happening. And then we had several groups last year, like the superintendent's teacher advisory council and our parents, who kind of talked about the same thing. Is what can we do to be more inclusive? We ended up having a training with leaders, several trainings and counselors along this, this issue. And then we also had a planning meeting last, gosh, was that last spring? Karen was there, where we had a couple of experts on the topic and we had a couple of parents and, and we were there. And we knew that we needed to create a district-wide plan for this. And so we're just going to, I'm just going to move that over now. So Jamie and Bill are working directly with Alicia Main. She's leading this as our HR coordinator to have a, a plan with a variety of groups of people, and I know they're going to talk about that. And now we're calling it inclusive excellence, not just diversity or equity or inclusion. This way, we can encompass all the areas you want to address.
Yes, as you mentioned, Jamie and I are partnering with Alicia to sort of get the ball rolling with the development of this initiative and to kind of move forward the actual body of work that will be reflected within, you know, the Fort Thompson Independent School District. Alicia, the goal is for her to be our primary point of contact as it relates to this concept and to this work that we'll move forward with, with some sort of a strategic plan. But at the onset, Jamie and I wanted to provide, you know, support and, and to make sure especially that we had a fair recruitment effort across all schools to reflect really the different personalities and backgrounds that we wanted assembled to be able to work through this challenge. And so in doing so, we have basically outlined a plan by which a group of individuals is going to come together, has come together and will continue to, to really work through what inclusive excellence may look like in our school district. And we're not really defining too discreetly what that may look like, because we want this group to sort of help shepherd us through what would be most appropriate for our students, for our teachers, for our parents, essentially the stakeholders of whom we do have influence over. And so you're just seeing snapshots right now of some current pieces of work. The first is our roster. So I would love for you to make notice that in the far right column, we have school affiliations as well as district representation from across the district. That was very intentional and very purposeful on our, on our part. We also have a variety of roles that are established, both at the classified level, like with the, what was it, with the school secretary component and with district central office classified personnel, to the teacher representatives, to the administrators and/or. to the administrators and or school counselors in the building level, um, to district administration, of whom several folks are in the room, uh, representing that domain, and then also parents. And they make sure that parents came from each level of instruction as well, elementary, middle and high. Um, so you sort of see the roster of, of whom we've recruited to come on board and, and be a part of this work. And so collectively, we developed, um, an agenda. You see a snapshot of an agenda for our very first meeting that we had, of which Karen was in attendance for, as was John, um, in the audience in summer, um, and Don, anywhere as well. And so we were really thankful for the group that did come together because we really only got through like task three, uh, because we were engaged already, um, as a group with so much content and so much considerations for others' differences and opinions and perspectives. Um, but I think what's important is that we've really led the foundation that the outcome of this group will be something. Like, there will be a thing of which we will do next in order to address this need that we have. Um, we're gonna be here and engage in discourse and, and discussion because that's healthy and that's gonna help us move forward. But we also, you're going to be a part, we've told them, you will be a part of a movement. We are going to do something different as a result of us coming together.
No, I, I do know that we are working with Alicia. She has unique resources. She's taken the time to then have that background research to be able to guide this work. And then her background has allowed us to have her that appointed one. Um, but at the same time, we want to have different perspectives come to the table. We want, like Bill said, having the discourse, having the conversation so that we can remove the barriers within our building and have our students feel comfortable, comfortable about who they are and what they believe in. And so in the end, we do hope that there will be some type of plan. Like Bill said, it's not prescriptive. We're not providing that information to the group. We want that to organically develop through the conversations that we have throughout the process. So we do have, um, four specific meetings that we share with our, our P and R group. And we will be meeting and hopefully by the end, we will have a plan of action if we need to continue to meet. That will be something that we will certainly consider. But we're hopeful that over the next three months, that we will, and we will come back to you and share an update in late winter, early spring.
Yeah, I'd, I'd just say it was, it was an amazing group of people to have together and, um, really important conversation to have for this district as well as the community. So, uh, it was, it's really great to see all of the, the intentional, uh, representation from the schools, from classified staff, certified staff, parents, et cetera. Um, I will say one comment that, that struck me out of our, our meeting and, um, it's, it's really stayed with me is to make sure that this effort is not tied specifically to achievement or something like that and it gets pushed to the side. So this is an effort that's important on its own merits. And we, as Bill said, we will have something coming out of this. It's very important for our kids to have this, this, uh, opportunity. So, um, it's not something that we're gonna tie to achievement, to scores, to anything like that. It's, it's an effort in its own, um, and it's very important that we, we continue to maintain that, so.
It will be derived in data. I mean, we do, we will be utilizing an analysis of data to help us move forward as well. So it's concrete and abstract really at the same time.
So, I know, Bill, you're still up here to talk about dual credit credentialing?
Oh, of course.
Jen is very patient. You know, if you re, if you all remember first year seventeen, eighteen, uh, you said we, we really needed to, as a, as a district, find a way to help teachers who are willing to do this pay for classes so they could get dual credit credentials so that they could teach those classes to our students. And so, ta-da.
Well, if you are not familiar, this is, uh, Ms. Jennifer Nash. She's, uh, one of our wonderful English department members from Highlands High School. She's phenomenal and she was the pioneeress in taking advantage of your opportunity to allow some of our high school teachers become credentialed to teach college credit courses on sites. Um, if you recall, we've really transitioned from, you know, two and one-half years ago to now of elaborating, uh, elaborating our program components for college credit coursework so that students have more opportunities and more options to choose from. And so one barrier that we recognized early on was that our teachers at Highlands High School wanted the opportunity to provide those opportunities to their own students. Not necessarily that they always have to default to outside professors. And so when we made that pledge of financial support to get our teachers in a place, those who wanted to, um, to move forward in this component, Jen really stood up first and said, I am willing and able to do it. And so she has achieved that milestone and we're proud of her for that. And the momentum only carried forward, um, this year with her being able to offer our very first college credit English courses with the current departmental structure that we have at Highlands. So we invited her to come this evening just to kind of give us a little bit of an update on, um, the background for that and what's currently in place for it. We knew that you'd be really excited to bro.
So, thank you, Mr. Bradford. Um, first of all, I do want to say thank you for the opportunity. Uh, we got an email from Trinity Walsh, um, and it was real cryptic. I remember like, how many English credits do you all have? It's about dual credit. Um, I was like, we, we already know that I have the most. And so, but I didn't have enough. So I was two classes short. So thank you for, um, paying for me to take the, the last two and actually a third because after I took the young adult literature class, um, they had a part two where you would actually start to develop your syllabus. And I remember talking to Mr. Bradford and I was like, uh, that would be amazing because I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing, really. Um, so that's, that's kind of been the process. And so, yeah, this fall, I would be actually, on Wednesday, we'll have our last class for the English one fifty. So part of what we wanted to make sure that we did was, we've worked very hard to build a strong AP program. Um, and so, I, I know I've kind of been the person who's always been saying we do really good with the high and we do good with the low, and then there's the kids in the middle that we tend to sometimes miss. Um, and as someone who taught AP Lit, so I have them on the very end, you know, taking a kid who's not successful in Lang as a junior and then putting them in Lit is really hard. Um, and so we essentially decided to target a really specific group of kids um, to kind of give them another opportunity for success and to earn the credit that they, um, were unable to earn in Lang. So we decided that we wanted the kids to be at benchmark in the bo, in, on the ACT in both reading and English. That way they didn't have any sort of barriers for using the credit when they went to secondary. Um, but they had also successfully completed the course. So you've managed everything. We know that you know how to write, um, you can handle the coursework. But then just a three-hour window in May, for whatever reason, um, they were unable to get the score. And so then those were the students that we invited. So right now I have a class of six and they're quiet. I'm like, guys, um, but they're lovely and I, I've been glad to see them grow. So part of what we showed them, and I think, you know, because of course like you've been in classes with your friends all along and they've had planned to take Lit and then we throw this curveball at them, um, was this chart. So essentially by taking, um, and passing the one fifty class, they will get their one-on-one credit. And so this is kind of what we showed them. Um, these are the big, you're well-attended colleges by our grads. So, um, they were able to get the credit that Lang would have gotten them. And so by taking the two fifty class, they essentially get what they would get by passing Lit. Um, and so it was kind of win-win. Do you take the, the kids and give them what we hope that they get? So that is exciting. Um, so Mr. Bradford asked about talking about the, the learning outcomes and what you're looking at right here is what, it's all Thomas More gave me. Make your class. And I remember them saying, you know, what's great? You have this academic freedom. And I was like, what?
They don't want that much freedom.
I, I mean, yeah, a little less freedom would be nice. So, um, that's what we were, you know, I was given and I kind of got to play. Um, and so it's been really exciting. And so I brought you, I didn't know if you wanted to. But I brought copies of the syllabus.
My goodness.
Yeah. Um, the two fifty is hot off the presses. It just got approved last week. Um, but essentially they're doing all the things that a college writing class would do because it is in fact a college writing class. Thomas More focuses more on the literary, um, aspect, which is different than NKU, which is more of the, the rhetoric argument kind of side. So that's fun for me. Um, I get to teach books that I wouldn't normally, so. Um, but they're still learning the documentation. They're still learning analytical skills. They're still academically arguing, just not persuading, persuading, um, and writing well. So they just turned in their last paper today. So I can read this, right? Um, a little bit, I'll shoot. So I kind of went two different directions. So for one fifty, I basically wanted to show them books where settings were, um, super integral to the plot. We sometimes tend to gloss over where and when the story's taking place. Um, so we looked at four novels that were, um, very much affected by the setting. They just wrote papers about social milieu and psych dice and words that they were like, at the beginning, they had no idea what it was, but, um, based on my conversations with them, now they do. Uh, and so kind of going along with what you were just saying about the inclusion plan, which, um, accidentally, I guess, my theme for the, the two fifty course is unheard voices. Um, this is my ninth year in the district and so we always kind of, I joke with the students that like, when you leave here, you're going to meet people who look differently and think differently. And I want you to be able to be, um, empathetic towards that. So I've chosen books that have, um, either characters that are culturally different, racially different, um, ability, different age. Um, and I'm pooling people from places to come and talk to them about it. Um, because I think, like I said, they give me the five criteria that I can kind of do what I want. So, um, I know, I just keep telling kids, I'm like, I'm so excited for next semester. I'm so excited for next semester. So, um, I hope they are too.
So you've got six in the one fifty? And will they all go to two fifty?
Yes. So they have to complete a full one credit for us, but they'll get six credits for competition.
They basically get two three-hour credit class credits.
So they probably were a little hesitant in the beginning. What do they think now?
Um, I mean, I think they're, I think they're good. Yeah. Um, I mean, the nice thing is, is it's a, it's a Monday, Wednesday, Friday schedule. Um, it got moved to fourth period, so they have these like weird two, like my office hours are just Tuesday and Thursday. They just sit in there with me and they do work. And I read eight hundred college essays among the six of them. Um, but, but so that's nice because I know when I first told them that was like, oh, how many books is AP gonna read? And how many books are we gonna read? And it was all like, we're gonna read more. Um, and, but I'm like, but you have those two classes. Like you, and, and they use every bit of it. So, yeah, now I think they're good. I know they're a little hesitant about next semester because they're like, up to the book.
I'd love that you picked a graphic novel, too.
Yes. Well, the funny thing was, is I read that book two years ago and I remember thinking, I think I would like this book better if I could see it. Um, and then when I was making the syllabus, I just randomly did a search, graphic novels, and it came up and I was like, oh. So they liked it.
Mix of boys and girls in the class?
Um, four girls, two boys.
What was the, uh, potential pool? How many, how many students did you ask?
Uh, I don't know. I think it was twenty-nine.
Okay.
And so I know that there was some, there was some conflicts originally. It was a six-period and that was like AP and Polydental and Internet Ed and those kinds of things. So that's, we moved it, but it was by then they were kind of, maybe they were already decided.
So do you think this will encourage more students to take AP Lit as a junior, knowing that they have this option? That if they don't pass it, then they still have the option to take the six hours for a senior year?
It's kind of like a tricky situation because I know that my department is a little hesitant about what this will do to AP. Um, and, and that was kind of the nice thing with us housing the class and teaching the class is that we can make sure that the integrity was what we expected and wanted. Um, but I don't know.
Yeah, but, but, yeah, if they don't do well in Lit or Lang, probably think they're knowing they're gonna do well and.
When, I know you had talked about, you know, like the day after the AP test, be like, hey, good job on that, if it doesn't work out for you. Yeah, but, you know, not necessarily before. I don't want people.
Right, yeah.
Do you see expanding it outside of kids that took AP or no?
Um, I mean, there's been conversations. I think that the, the nice thing with, and I mean, I teach English four too, so I, I see all the seniors that, that come to me, is just making sure that they all have a similar skill set. Um, the benchmark thing to me was important because we do spend, eh, not doing ACT prep, but working on the skills that will help ACT schools. And that's not at all what we're doing here. Um, I know one of the things early on that I had a conversation with kids about, I was like, we work on college essays, um, in English four and AP Lit, and we don't do that in here because you're already in college. So I was like, you know, those workdays that you have, that's when you can work on them and read them. And like I said, they took advantage. Um, but, I mean, there was some conversation, because right now we have a senior Lang class, um, that people who did really well in English three, that for whatever reason decided not to do the AP track early on, they can go there. Um, I don't know.
Are you the only teacher now in school teaching, um, dual credit?
Dual credit English.
Okay. What are, what are some of the other subjects that are dual credit?
There's some communication, pop culture classes.
Tim, Tim Out, yeah, education. Tim Out teaches, uh, geology, astronomy.
Business, business classes?
Oh, yeah. Elise Carter's teaching all that entrepreneurship marketing.
And that's all considered.
Good college. And then Ron Rizell's teaching the classes that you see, that you say you should.
Probably be nice for us to see just that list, just as FYI, don't put it, don't put any work into it, but if there's something easy.
I have quite a few online classes, right, that aren't taught by a, so aren't there some NKU online classes students can take that aren't taught by a teacher here? It's just through NKU.
Oh, shit.
Right, sixth period, maybe, yeah. They can choose different things.
Well, I also would like to thank you for volunteering to do that. I mean, you went back to school. I mean, you know, you, you went back for three semesters of class.
It was nice because that British Romanticism class ended right before we did the unit for AP Lit. So I was like, ooh, I'm ready. Read everything again. So, yeah. It's been a lot of fun. It was fun to be in that seating.
I forgot, our health classes are also all dual credit NKU. Health innovations that we have here, so. And Westerns. I think we do one for Western, yeah.
So are you, so are you done now? So after this semester, you'll be done with your classes that you have to take?
Oh, I was, I was, I was finished.
Okay, all right.
I just, the way that NKU's master program worked, I had, well, I don't, can't remember what the breakdown was, like eighteen education and twelve English. And I needed eighteen English, so.
Okay, so you had this.
Yeah, why not?
Now, have they already talked to you? I, I foresee this coming, talking to you about teaching classes, like in the evening at Thomas More? You know, it's happening. Kim Griot, she's now teaching a class for NKU.
There she is.
Yeah.
Is she teaching pop culture?
I asked a lot of questions.
And it's since the fact of what our head was when we put this together, it was to keep our kids here to this cost. And to have them learn from our own people as much as possible. This is excellent. This is exactly what I had expected. It works with kids and I especially like they're filling up the gap there on the AP test because I would have had a couple of kids in the gap and there were no other opportunities. So it provides more opportunities for our kids and in for us as well. So, uh, thank you very much for participating.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight, too, Jen.
Thank you.
On a Monday night, you had to wait, right?
Bill, do we have anybody else currently doing what Jen has done?
Yes, we do. Uh, Warren Peterson.
Okay. Okay.
Very cool.
And there are a couple more that were gonna start. It's just a lot good for their family right now.
Right now, okay. Gotcha.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming, Jen.
Uh, let's see. Next on the agenda, board committee updates. Any updates since, uh, last time we met?
Bill gave our inclusivity committee.
Okay. No updates? All right. Then we'll move right along, uh, for the approval of the consent agenda. Any motion for approval?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, any other business? Last day of school's next Friday, right?
A week from this Friday.
Week from Friday? And then we heard Wax Museum is Thursday at Moyer? That's right, the other schools, different dates, right? Johnson?
I think they're usually different dates.
Different dates, all right. Okay. Okay. On hold for now, okay. All right, well, Moyer's is Thursday, or, yes. That's a thing. Perfect, okay. Oh, yes.
Do we have to decide where this goes? What all happens?
You can decide where you guys.
Board? Board chair, staple?
That's what I didn't know.
Decide whatever. Well, we have plenty of money for the scholarship, right? We haven't had as many people, but if you have a special project or something you want.
We can talk about it.
Talk about it. Something that we can honor Dawn with as well. Yes.
Okay, well, nothing else, thank you for coming, meeting adjourned.